It's odd, nobody's in here today.
Nothing this morning yet. Stephanie will be in here in a minute, I'm sure.
Okay, welcome those folks on YouTube and those in the audience. Today is Monday, July 1st. This is our Weekly County Commissioner Meeting. I'll call a meeting order and ask everyone to rise and follow me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to look at the agenda. No additions or corrections, I'd entertain a motion to approve. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for July 1st.
Second.
Would you second all in favor, please say aye. Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is an action item. This is the meeting minutes of June 24th. And if there's no additions or corrections, I'd entertain a motion to approve those.
I did have a couple of corrections. Did you get those?
Yeah, they're okay.
Okay, you got those?
And I would move to approve the meeting minutes of June 24th.
A motion in a second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A motion carries. Our next agenda item is not until 9:15, so Kirsten, if you could just mute us and we'll see everyone back here at 9:15.
They don't need an hour.
Welcome back, everybody on YouTube and those in the audience. We're at our 9:15 agenda item. This is an action item. We have West Hazard Unit Area Extension. And then we also have some bids. So what do you want to do first, Steph?
Let's go ahead and do the area extension. Get that off of our.
I don't know if we have anything on that. That was, we talked about it, but I forgot.
Well, what this is, is that this is the, we did this a couple, three weeks ago. It is a project over off of Highway 55 on Crowley Lane. It is, Crowley Lane is across from the Bear Basin, a merry entrance. And we're back in there. And I always knew there was a little piece across Williams Creek that could be treated. But I wanted to see if, how dry it would get over there. And there's some pretty good ground, but I want a little more. If it dried up, it'd be fine. Anyway, and also wanted to see how, whomever got the contract performed. See if that was where I wanted to make this addition. And it's dry, and this contractor's performing very well. So my proposal is that we add 2.4 acres to Jeffrey Miller Excavation on West Hazard HFR Grant Unit Number Four. The total payment would be $52,92 even.
$5,292.
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, so I need a motion to approve this extension and increase in acreage.
Chairman, I would move that we approve the 2.4 acres to Jeffrey Miller, Unit Number Four, for $5,292 in the West Hazard.
Motion in a second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A motion carries.
Thank you.
Yeah, the next.
Did you get that?
Motion, did she get that?
She's clerking for us today. Sure she gets that.
So our next agenda item is actual bid opening for West Hazard Unit Six. And we have, how many? Three. Three bids. Okay, so we'll go, first one is from John Lydrickson, Specialized Land Works. And this is for plus or minus six acres, is that correct?
That is correct.
Six acres, and the bid is $2,175 per acre for Specialized Land Works. $2,175.
$13,050.
Okay. Okay, the next one is from, this is Jeffrey Miller Excavating. This bid is for $2,800 an acre.
$16,800.
And the last bid is going to be from Bear and Loper. And this bid is for $2,465.
It's $14,790.
And that's all we got. So what's your pleasure?
So it doesn't matter if this is a different contractor on the six acres. Or this is a totally separate project. I'm sorry.
It's actually on the south side of Highway 55 off of the Bear Basin Road. It's right between that Meadows Road, kind of that corner right there. There's three little pieces on it. How am I missing? Puzzle pieces? Oh, from over the years. It's, I think it's possibly a good opportunity to see how this low bid might work in there. And because it is a small parcel, it's sensitive because it is a drainage area. So you have to pay attention where you are. And there's actually some possibility of adding a little bit if I feel like it has dried up enough before the end of the term. So I'm good with going with the lowest bid.
Is this somebody you've worked with before?
Yeah, this is, in fact, this is a contractor that we have had challenges with. We've gone through and we've visited about it. We've chosen not to work with a super low bid with him here recently. This bid, I think, is reasonable. And in fact, I just, for Mara's edification, I just dug up all of that information about that whole process. So she has all of that documentation. So moving forward, there's a good opportunity for her to know the history of everything that has happened. But I don't mind the opportunity here to see if we can't make a good project out of this. And if we can't, then I will be back in here talking with you about it.
Hey, so I'd entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion. We award the bid to Specialized Land Works. A total prize of $13,050.
I have a second.
Got a motion and a second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A motion carries. Kirsten, can you sign for Doug on these? Why don't you go ahead and sign, and then we can get that back to Steph.
Everybody better buckle up this summer, I think.
I don't know, man, the grass is sure not doing good this year.
My grass is this tall.
Yeah, I'm seeing grasses.
In the timber, it's good, but wherever the frost got to it.
But you use your grass. I'm talking about places that don't use their grass anymore.
Mine is as high as I've ever seen it.
That's going to be interesting.
So it's a good season to have a lot of activity. County looks like it's doing something. There's kind of projects going around, and it's good.
How are you?
That was the, that was the windy city.
SRS is starting to make progress.
About five million too many people there.
I think is what the next opportunity is.
I bet. I've been there one time in my life. It was, I don't need to go back.
He's not saying SRS, I'm saying one, two, and three.
That's why I put him surgery at the big hospital there.
Always been a make money.
So before that happened, we went to a Bears game. Only game they won that year. It was a good time.
That's some great museums.
Here, you want this?
And. It's so interesting, but it could be a really nice influx of funding.
Yeah, signs are not trying to take away our rights to do what we're supposed to be doing.
Understanding.
Thank you. Thanks, Steph. You as well. Anyone want to keep that on going, or you, the next agenda item, these are all action items. First one is to approve and assign the transfer site with Great West Engineering. And Scott, come on up the mic, I guess. Honestly, I'm a little blown away at this one. This is a lot of money just for engineering.
Well, if that engineering, dude, they're helping with the bid process and all the same stuff. Apparently, it's actually about $200,000 for what we did.
But just for engineering?
Yeah.
Because I was looking at what they're going to do, and there was a kind of a breakdown towards the end. Can't find it, hang on. That's what it was. There it is. Their task description, and Task Number Four is, services during construction was $93,000. Is that, they're going to monitor and?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not just engineering then?
No, it's also helping us prepare with the bid process and everything else and stuff, so it's.
So they're kind of like a project superintendent, project manager type deal?
Yeah, to help with that.
And I would move that we approve the Great West Engineering, agreement for engineering and project management at the transfer site.
For $181,000.
$181,000.
Second. Would you second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A motion carries. What's this one? Man. Something that road engineer could do someday. There's our fairgrounds looking.
What's that?
Those fairgrounds looking.
I don't have a dollar this week yet.
Think they're still spreading out dirt. Okay, the next item on our agenda is to sign the professional services agreement with Clean Earth Household. And for $51,741.22. This is for hazardous waste collection. Do you remember last year, Scott, was it 40? 44?
Yeah, and I'm actually about $4,000 short. I estimated $47,000 this year, so I'm going to go over on this budget a little bit.
Have they set a date yet, Scott?
What? 31st, it's after Memorial Day weekend, but it's the date that was available for us. I've got to find there.
September 31st?
August 31st.
August 31st. Oh, it's before Memorial Day.
Memorial Day is for Labor Day. It's Labor Day.
Labor Day, yeah.
Labor Day is on the sheet. Scott, do you know, they ship this to Seattle or Portland?
I'm trying to remember.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the West Hazard, or excuse me, the hazardous waste disposal for Clean Earth Household.
Second. Okay, we got a motion second to approve the contract for.
I'm trying to find the amount, $51,741.22.
Right. Did you get that, Kirsten?
$741.22.
You got a motion and a second to approve this, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries.
I would imagine their hazardous waste costs are going up. Everybody else is so.
Chemicals, so.
Well, I think lithium batteries are going to get more people.
Yeah.
Coming.
This has to have Doug's signature at the bottom.
Kirsten signed for Doug today.
Look at that. I'll bring him up here so he can step in.
Sign for him tomorrow, we can leave it for him.
I think it'll be okay.
I don't think anybody will be at that table.
I don't think so.
Thank you. Saving myself steps if I can.
And you get them more sensors than you get that.
Yeah. Watch my wife go through it, yes. Very bad for staying in the family.
And then Scott, you have, last item on the agenda is discussion decision on asphalt. You know, the parking lot, is that, both parking lots or the one across the street? Or which parking lot are you talking about?
Talking about the one back here. It was approved in, in 2022, is when the contract, I got a call, I was, received a call on Thursday from Brad. They went back and looked in their records and wanted to know if we wanted to still go forth with it. They could come do it right away, so.
For the same price? For the same price?
I've got, he did not say. I need to verify that with him because the total price is, the alleyway is $8,232 to redo the alleyway out there because we've had, there's, you know, the cast iron valve that comes up out of the ground with the cap. They caught it several years ago and it's busted. And then it's, I guess there was lines that broke out there. They were digging across there and broke them or somewhere one time prior to me being here.
Yeah, that was about the time you were coming on, I think it was a heat pump line.
Yeah, the lines there, someone was doing work through the alley, and it's just never got put kind of back together, so that, clear that up. And then it's, $49,642.72 is what they bid to redo this out here. Want to lower this drain out here near the road so we can see if we can get the kind of drain better that way and stuff. So I thought Doug was going to be here, didn't know he'd been gone. I talked to him last week after I got the call. He thought the money was still available since it had never been used back there. But I was hoping to verify that today, but.
So if I've got my numbers right, that's a total of $57,879.72.
Yeah, $74.90 is what I have.
I think we need to go ahead and do it. I mean, we identified that two years ago was a priority. I know the CIP committee is going to come and have a discussion with us, but I think this is still a priority. Has been for a while, so.
Yeah, Scott, are you going to try and get them to schedule it on a weekend?
Well, they're, it's going to have to be. That's one thing I got to put up with a little noise and stuff out there because they got to tear all the asphalt out. I mean, they're not going over it. They're going to tear it out.
What? They're going to dig it up.
They'll probably just dig it up there. I don't know if they can get a grinder in here to grind that out of there. But I mean, that means all the asphalt's going out, doing regrading, possibly lowering that drain out there, and then re-asphalting it. So it's not going to be a, you know, one or two day deal. It's going to take all that time.
They're probably going to use a track. Where do they go with the old asphalt?
I don't know what they do. They're going to haul it up to the fence for site, or if they have a site, they keep it, you know.
Talk to Larry and see if Parks and Rec can't use it on one of our trails.
Okay.
Well, it's going to have to be ground to use it, I think, sure.
Yeah, I mean, they tear it out in chunks, yeah.
Big chunks, or we're going to have to take it somewhere it can be ground.
I'm surprised there's not more value placed on that because, you know, talk more Timber Creek, there's a real value to grinding up the asphalt when we're using it. You know, we've got some pretty good piles there at Lake Fork and stuff. And if there was somewhere we could separate and stockpile it and, you know, grind it and reuse it.
Well, and I think that's a discussion you'd have with these guys is where they're going to go. Because we might, and I would talk to Jeff, we might want to keep that asphalt, and they'll have to haul it to Lake Fork. That would be part of that bid.
Yeah.
And I think we should keep it and find somebody to grind it and put it on our pathways.
Absolutely.
Timber Creek will grind it. I mean, they'll grind our concrete, they'll grind, you know, block. I mean, that's one of the things that they do. They separate the concrete with. They, they separate the concrete with rebar from the dozen and then they go and they got a deal that cuts up the stuff with the rebar and they can grind it. They grind it, um, it can be put back on roads is, you know, kinda like road mix and the asphalt, this is a big, you know, especially like you were just talking, the shortage of available pit run and, and road mix and stuff, this, uh, redoing the asphalt, um.
Okay, so we haven't signed a contract with this company, have we?
Who's that?
This company wants to do this work.
Grammat?
Yeah, we have a signed contract.
You have a signed contract?
Yeah, it was signed in September 2022.
We need to look at that to see what they're gonna do with the old asphalt.
Yeah.
If that's part of their payment or if that's their keeping it or what?
Mm-hmm.
And then, uh, if we have to redo that, I think, Sherry makes a great point, we need to start keeping that stuff.
Yeah, cause it is, I mean, it's got value, we get a, a good, you know, good pilot, we could afford to have, uh, have someone like Timber Creek come up and grind it up for us and have a stockpile of it.
And they might not honor the contract and that's your own. It's after 30 days, so I bet we end up doing another one.
Yeah, well, I thought he said, you know, we'll come do it now, if you wanna do it.
Get her done. We need to let all the employees know, maybe some.
Yeah, I'll get it out, cause we're gonna have to, you know, they're gonna have to park, you know, over New Lyne across and they can park over by my shop and around on the back side. Cause like I say, it's not gonna be, you know, a two, three day process, I don't believe.
Does it go all the way through the alley to the other road?
No, it goes just to the other gate.
Other gate, yeah. Yeah, we only have what is to the corner of the courthouse, I think.
Yeah.
And while I'm thinking about it, there is, there is a site there that has hot water on that corner.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
And I think they're, I think they may have drilled it and then they just capped it that's underneath the pavement. I don't know for sure on that, but.
Yeah.
That was a big talk years ago. Um, is there any way they could fix the cut in the north parking lot while they have all this asphalt hanging around?
I, I've had talked with Rick Corn from Tri-State and he has, um, talked with Granite about repairing that. So, um, that's something we can discuss at the same time.
Try and get that all thrown into one.
Yeah, cause I, um, I tell Rick, he's talked with Max from Tri-State and this is get it fixed, so. I think they're trying, you know, something with Courtney, he, he said he talked with Granite about, you know, coordinating getting that fixed. So it might be something we can do while they have their equipment here and stuff, so. Right with that.
Um, I know this isn't on the agenda, but will you kinda talk amongst us here on city redoing the sidewalk sometime this fall?
Yep.
Is there any way that we could save our trees?
Which trees?
The trees are in the sidewalk now.
We don't want trees out there.
You don't want trees, why?
Cause they, the roots bust, that's why the concrete's the way it is. Once you plant trees along the sidewalk, you look at the one, the boys see, as soon as those trees start growing, you start popping and, and it, it just, it ruins the sidewalk. You'll be back in 10, 15 years doing it again. Trees are a terrible idea along the sidewalk.
Good.
You know?
They sure do, um, make it a lot more aesthetically pleasing in your downtown.
And but there's what, two, three trees, it's not, it's, it's not worth, you know, you look, every place there's a tree. They've had to fix the sidewalk.
Yeah, and I can understand that, I, I'm just wondering if maybe we could transplant them back here like where this one was on the corner, save the trees, cause they're really nice trees.
Yeah.
It's sad to get them this far and then rip them out.
That might be too big to transplant.
Yeah, it might be.
Yeah, cause usually they have to have those diggers that go down and, and grab the roots and I don't, you know, I don't think that's part of their budget or anything and stuff and, um, and I know the trees are great and I love trees, but if they're on a sidewalk, they're a terrible idea.
Not to work. Okay, I just thought I'd throw that out there.
Yeah, cause they're gonna start that second or third week of August, so right now.
Right before Labor Day.
Yeah. Well, school will be back in, they said and stuff, so traffic they think will be down, but it's, that's, that was the, the meeting I went to last week. We're gonna look at doing an alternative entrance of this corner down here, um, cause they're gonna take it all out at once and then they're gonna come back and machine pour it all at once. And we're also looking at coordinating, doing the apron out here at the same time and stuff, um, so.
How many entrances are we gonna have on that parking lot?
What's that?
Are we down to one entrance on that parking lot?
Which one, across the road?
Yeah. On our northern.
Isn't there two there?
There is right now, but we had talked about only having one.
Mm-hmm. We wanna reduce it to one?
What? I think we need two, don't we?
Yeah, it's nice to have, cause you see, we have two rows of.
Where's that discussion?
I think the sheriff wanted it down to one for.
That was during that CIP saying that we were, they were talking about reducing it to one, but I don't know what all came of it.
Check with the sheriff and, and ask.
Mm-hmm.
For some reason, I think the sheriff wants it at one for security purposes, because you've got, now you got three entrances within 50 feet of each other. I mean, they're really, if they're gonna put two official entrances there, now you got, you know, duplicate people coming into that parking lot again and you got your.
We kinda have three rows of parking, you know, we have against the trees, so you need one for, from the trees to the center and you need one from the center out. So I don't know if that's really, I don't see it being a security issue or anything else, I mean.
We just need to verify, cause I know that the conversations have been back and forth and I don't know what they planned it on.
Yeah, I can, um, yeah, the engineer from the city and see what, you know, the plan was for it.
Anything else?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, we're back to Toby on fixing the parking lot at the Maritile.
No, never have got back from Toby on it. Scott?
He said, I talked to him last week, he said the plan is we're working on it.
He's working on it. There you go. Thank you. Okay, our, our next agenda item is at 9:45, so Kirsten, if you mute us until then, I wanna make sure that, see if the sheriff's coming in on this.
Okay, welcome back everybody on YouTube and those in the audience. So we're at our 9:45 agenda item. This is an action item. This is to approve the Valley County Law Enforcement Contract with the Bureau Reclamation. Sheriff, come on up. Looks to me like you guys are getting a little more funds for this job.
Yes, a little bit more. Good morning Commissioners.
Morning.
So basically, this is just an extension of the contract we're already under, and I don't really see where there was a place for the Commissioners to sign. However, I think it's just good for you guys to know what's being generated, just to kind of keep in your mind what's coming in as well as what's going out. So I just wanted you guys to see it, take a look at it. Obviously, the prosecutors already looked at it, and quite frankly, I think it's fine if just you sign it, Commissioner. But yeah, it's just for the extra patrolling of BOR ground and the reservoir. So basically, it's the Marine Division that's doing it.
This brings the total now to 171,000 for Marine?
That's for, that's for full five years. Yes.
Well, this is over a five-year period.
Yes, so this one's for 30, 30-some thousand, yeah. But it did go up on, this one's for 34,2 annual.
Okay.
Sheriff, where does this allow us? Is this on the waterway?
On the waterway, the dam. So in the winter, we're still doing it too by checking BOR properties, checking the dam every day, making sure that it's fine. Nobody's parked on it. Nobody's trying to drive over it, stuff like that. So there's obviously way less in the winter, just because most of their, most of their campgrounds are closed off and everything. But we do still patrol it. And ones that they keep open for snowmobilers, we patrol those as well, just to keep.
Okay. So then that figures out to $34,200 a year.
That is correct.
That's what I want to get straight.
That is correct.
So I'll make the motion we approve the Law Enforcement Contract with the Bureau Reclamation. Second?
Second.
We have a motion second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Make sure we get that in the minutes and we're good.
You need to sign it?
Yeah.
It's nice for you guys to know it's.
Absolutely. It's nice to know that we're getting reimbursed from our federal partners because we do talk about that a bit with them, so.
The feds pay for some of this, or?
The feds, the Forest Service, or?
With BOR.
$34,000.
He is picking that up.
You're gone.
This is a contract within $34,000.
Yeah, you're half over already.
I know. It's scary. Thank you folks, I appreciate it.
Yep, have a good day.
Bet.
Thank you guys. Appreciate all they do for a weekend like that, man.
It's gonna be next week.
Oh, yeah.
In the high 90s up here.
It's been a lot of water folks. Here we have our next agenda item is at 10. This is an action item, and not all of our folks here are yet, so we will go mute and see everyone back here at 10. This is for the McGregor Townsite Deliberation.
It had a summary of standards that had the total acreage, open space, residential lots, standards, and what was proposed for this development. It had the phasing plan attached to it, and then it also had the sequencing plan, which is used to guarantee amenities. Well, it's a portion of the guarantee for amenities, okay? And then it goes into, I listed each one of the different standards out of the ordinance, and presented findings and conclusions. So if you want to talk through those, you want me to lead that, or, I mean, like table 9-5-4, this has two acres, so it meets that standard, 9-5A-1. They're all listed here, they're all part of the record. I don't know if there are some that you don't believe meets the requirements, or how do you want to do that?
Well, I guess, you know, the best way to get dirty is to step in the mud, but like the first question on the compatibility rating is, is the proposed use compatible with the dominant adjacent land use? And your definition of dominant adjacent land use includes, those with the largest parcels will be considered dominant. I'm trying to find where I read that in the.
It's under 9-11-1 Appendix A-E.
Can you state the definition of?
Of dominant? Is any use which is within 300 feet of the use boundary being proposed, and is at least one-half of the adjacent uses and one-fourth of the total adjacent use. But then it goes on to say where two or more uses compete equally in number and are more frequent than all other uses, the one with the greatest amount of acreage is the dominant land use.
So to me, that tripped me up right off the way, because if you provided the map provided by the applicant, if you look at that, it's mostly on three sides, it's large lots or agriculture. So is that the dominant land use? If that's the case, then you would receive a negative value on the compatibility question number one right off the bat, because you have to use the largest, large acreages as the dominant land use.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
I looked at it differently than that, but if you take the use in this area, and you take the number of acreages that are residential versus agriculture at this moment in time, the residential use is greater than the agricultural.
But the ordinance says, can you repeat?
Okay, this is within the 300 feet. This over on this side is residential.
But on the north side, east side, and the lower side, they're bigger, so you have to take those acreages as the dominant land use.
But that's not true. If you look up here, so here, a single-family residential within the 300 feet. This is a platted subdivision right here.
With big lots.
But it's still residential, it's not ag. And then if you go over here, this is subdivision, also this means a, whatever it is, it's.
Well, I think this is where I get a little bit confused, because according to the definition, it's the large lots is the dominant land use. And that hung me up right off the bat. Same thing for question number two.
Okay, so I think we need more, I think we need to redo this.
Well, we have to deal with what we have right now.
Yeah, exactly. So the bona fide agricultural uses, I mean, he just split this 20 out. I believe he's gonna do a house, but right now, this is ag. This is ag. This piece here has a single-family residence, but it has some ag use.
They run in cattle, what are they, any idea what they're doing?
No, I didn't look that up. It's.
What was your interpretation of this? You've done these before. I've never done one before, so I thought it was very confusing.
And that's, that's the biggest thing I noticed with these guys. Every single day just sitting on the P and Z, look at it and attribute it differently. Every single person, even though you look at it and you try to dis- to assimilate what each piece means, kind of like what else saying, what's the dominant? And then you add in the other factors like what Cindy has shown us, it can sometimes be very confusing. And you just have to really take a close look at what you feel is the dominant use, and then add in other factors that go with it.
I think we need the ass-planning zoning to relook at this compatibility as we move forward. But you're right, we have to use what we have right now. I just looked at it. What is that dominant adjacent land use?
And I think you guys are being passed.
It's not that I don't disagree that there's smaller subdivision lot sizes in there, but the definition shoots me back to whatever the largest acreage is around it is the dominant land use. That's what it says. So that, to me, is a negative to number one and number two.
No.
I know one's within 300 feet and one's within the general area, right?
Well, two are within 300 feet. First one's the dominant, and the second question is the other adjacent land uses. So if number one is dominant, single-family, because of these subdivisions and uses on two sides, or you can go with ag, which is on the north side and most of the east side.
We have to go with egg, because the definition of dominant adjacent land use says we have to go with the larger parcels, right?
The largest area, not the largest parcel.
No, it says, read the definition again, because I had it, it's on, and that one, that one sets the tone for the rest of the questions, really.
The one with the greatest amount of acreage in that 300 feet.
Okay.
Okay. And on this one, I believe it, it's pretty close to 50/50.
As far as, if you were to measure the border around this applicant's ground, you're probably more than 50, it's probably more residential than it is agriculture. But the definition of the code says you have to take the largest parcels as the dominant land use. Wish I could find it.
It says the largest amount. It doesn't say largest parcel.
Read the definition of.
The 9-11, which one?
Any use which is within 300 feet of the use boundary being proposed. So within that 300 feet.
Okay. Which is pretty much all of it.
And then where two or more uses compete equally in number, which I believe this one does, kind of ag and residential.
And the largest lot, what does it say?
The one with the greatest amount of acreage is the dominant use, so the greatest acreage The one with the greatest amount of acreage is the dominant use, so the greatest acreage in that 300 feet.
Okay, and that choke of ground that is on the, either northwest corner, the next one over from the pivot is also ag, isn't it? To the left, to the left, over towards Siskiyou, isn't that ag? And that's within 300 feet.
I'm not sure what that one is. It was a 300-foot ruler.
It just says, it's Class 118, other rural use, I don't know if they maintain ag on it or not.
It could be past or something.
It's not, it's valued at 382,000. So that wouldn't be an ag value.
They've lost their ag use. I think we're 50/50, so on this one, I, you know, I mean, I'm happy to just do zero, so that you're not competing residential and ag. I, I think this is a transition area, I really wish the county had a transition zone, and I think that's what this would be, but...
Yeah, that's kind of what I've been thinking all along, it's too bad we can't do more of a transition zone between ag and residential, but we don't have that built in the ordinance. So I'm going to go on, I'm going to do question number two. Is the proposed use compatible with other adjacent land uses?
So I can track this, you want to do a zero?
Um, no, I gave that a minus two.
I gave it a one.
Neil, would you do it? Would you do a, well? We're not even supposed to be at the compatibility rating yet, so we're supposed to be discussing.
You kind of have to do it all at the same time, really, it's hard to do it separately.
Yeah, but the compat...
Number two, that question seemed kind of subjective to me as well, because 50% of it's residential and 50% of it is ag, then what do you do?
Well, if the dominance on this one is ag, then the other adjacent use would be single-family.
Right.
But if the dominant's single-family, the other would be ag. Whichever one isn't the dominant is the other adjacent land use.
Oh, great day. That's a great day.
I mean, we're going to have as many issues as planning.
We're splitting hairs, that's what we're doing.
So... Is the, number one, is the proposed use compatible with the dominant adjacent land use?
And it is totally opposite of the dominant adjacent land use, which is agriculture. So we'd get the highest negative value.
And that's in your opinion, yes.
That's my, I'm, that's, yeah, that's where I'm coming from.
You guys, as a board, need to decide what that number is.
Well, then, so you would take my minus two, and then whatever their numbers are, and average them, and that would be our number for the compatibility. So you guys got to vote.
Yeah, because I got a, I got a plus two on that.
Which would be the single-family residential.
Yeah.
I've got a plus one.
Got a plus one. So that would be plus one times four? If mine's a negative two?
Has everybody concurred that that's a plus one for question one? Based upon the averaging of those numbers?
The averaging, yes, correct.
So you're, you're fine with a positive one?
It would be a plus one.
I'm even, I'm just not giving it a rating if there's that much...
So the response value would be a plus four then, right?
Right.
So, yes, but we'll add all that up later.
Okay. Let's move to question number two then. That one was, to me, so subjective, it's really hard to, there's really nothing in the ordinance or the definitions that helps you one way or the other. This application could be compatible with residential, but it's certainly not compatible with agriculture. That one, when I came back on that one, was looking at the fact that the comp plan to promote the rural of Valley County, and this does the opposite of that. So that one I gave a negative four as well.
Other adjacent land use is the opposite of what the dominant is, so if your dominant is ag, then the remainder of that would be the other adjacent land uses.
That's how you're supposed to read that?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because there's 300 feet around this block.
Other, oh, I see.
If the dominant's ag, then the other would be the single-family residential.
What does it mean by total and average?
Now, which one of the comp plan goals did you pull that statement from?
Um, it's the very first one, I think, or something about retain the rural aspect of Valley County, whatever one number that is.
So are we doing the comp plan now?
Well, that's, the part of it is I'm using to give it a negative value.
And I, if you're under, so Chapter 1 is just a basic, Chapter 2 is the population. Goal 1 is to accommodate growth and development while protecting the quality of life.
This one talks about the rural values. I don't have that, let's see, maybe it's in...
Both goal two, retain the rural, small-town character enjoyed by residents and visitors, and consider the community's stated vision to retain its attractive rural character and existing advantages from the future. In 2030, Valley County allowed more people and more businesses, and will retain the small-town feel in a rural setting. That is a statement within that, but within that same is to accommodate growth and development while protecting quality of life. Sewer and water reduce the risk to the environment, which protects the wells in the existing area, that's a protection of the quality of life. It stated that residential use is less toxic to water bodies than agriculture during the public hearing. So that one prompts a proposed separate development from the existing residential use, it protects the quality of life for those that live next to it. Expansion of the water system fixes an existing problem within a well in the adjoining sub. If we want to do the comp plan, I think we need to do it holistically, and go through all of that, but... I don't know what your response is to that.
Well, then I would say in number two, now that I understand it, I would probably give that a zero value, because it is compatible with the development to the west and to the south.
So...
What's your guys' vote, huh?
On number two, I gave a plus one. I felt like it was compatible with other adjacent land uses, and my original thought was there was more residential than there was ag. So that's, I was on that 50%, or I called 51%. So that's where I'm leaning.
And I would, I would go with zero, and just leave it.
So zero?
Well, that's a, plus one times two is the two value, right?
We had one, we both had zero, so we had zero.
You go with the, I mean, concurrence is zero, the average would be a zero.
Okay, will you do zero, Neil?
I guess a big point five.
That's why I'm making it difficult.
Okay.
Zero times nothing is zero.
So then the third question is, the local vicinity, which is within three miles.
And I'm going to go first on this one, basically the reason I gave this one a minus number as well is because it's not in the impact area. The, to be, development like this should be close to the city limits or in the city limits for this kind of density. People are still going to have to drive to Donley to get groceries or eat out, or they can't walk to town from this, this place. And to me, I think the, it was a 3,400 car to be, it's going to be not compatible with where this development is, so I gave that a minus four.
But that's not, in my opinion, what the question three is. It's looking at the compatibility, it's not talking about where it is, it's not talking about if we feel like it should be in the impact area. This is within a three-mile radius, is this compatible with the overall land use? And you look within a three-mile radius, and this, this started before, a long time ago, before we even had planning and zoning, this started as being residential use. We didn't have anything to do with that. But this has transitioned into residential use, so in my opinion, this is compatible, and I gave that one a two.
Two?
Yeah.
When I did the same thing, I felt like it was compatible, just because all the, the whole area that has been growing up over the years, it's just going to add to it, it'll be a little more traffic. It'll take 30-plus years to build this thing out. I gave it a plus one.
Plus one? And I, as I stated earlier, I gave it a minus four, so that's a negative one times one?
No, you can't...
How do you do that?
Neil, what was yours?
Plus one.
Mine was a two.
Mine's a negative four.
You can't have a negative four, you can only have, not minus two to positive two.
Oh, shoot, okay.
You can only do the first row.
Yeah, so it's a negative two. Mine, mine was a negative two, so this is a plus one again.
Positive one.
Okay, want to move down to question four?
But, oh...
I don't know, am I doing this right, Cinda?
No, we're supposed to be going over the comp plan and the ordinances that this speak to before we do this.
And I, I would...
And that's what I'm trying to do, bring in what, what ordinances I used in my justification.
I think for the sake of the record and making sure we're doing a thorough job analyzing our ordinances and our comp plan, you need to have a general discussion of those codes as presented in that Attachment J, and bring out some of those facts that you're making your decisions on, bring out some of your conclusions, things that, you know, you're, what you think need to be mitigated, and then we can come back to this specific portion of compatibility rating.
The thing is, is we, so when we're making these decisions, these aren't fun for any of us, you know, these are the hardest part of our jobs, but I didn't write the ordinance, I didn't write the comp plan. I have to be the one that looks at our current comp plan, our current ordinances, and make legal decisions based upon those. And that's our entire job up here. And so when we look at this, I have to take all emotion out of it. It doesn't matter if I want this or I don't want this. Emotions have nothing to do with it, in my opinion. We have to look to our comp plan and our ordinance, and then from there we make legal decisions. If not, they have every right to take us to district court, and we lose all of our ability to manage any of it. And so that's what I did. I, I spent 10 hours on this over the weekend, looking at every single ordinance we had and all of our comp plans. And I can tell you what I came up with that, or else, if you want to start with that, that's great, but I think we need to address it first, because all of this compatibility question goes to that conversation. How do you mitigate, and does this meet our current ordinance? So I don't know who wants to start, I'm happy to do that, but...
I've got it, you know, for mine, I have it written up, because it's, there's a lot. I'll just start off with, what I've got written down, it says, you know, I just feel that this PUD is in compliance with the Valley County ordinances in Title 9, Chapters 5, 9, and 11, governing PUD requirements, and is in harmony with the Valley County Comprehensive Plan. And Title 9, 1, 8 allows landowners flexibility in developing their land. The PUD has 50% common use area and has access to water and sewer facilities, which I'm really leaning hard that way. I hate all these one-acre lots with a well and septic on one-acre lots, that drives me crazy, and we're trying to get away from that. And I really like the idea that we do have water and sewer facilities in this proposal. The Land Use Planning Act, Title 67-6515 governs PUDs and regulations upon them. We've got 167 acres, 87 acres of open space. That's not bad. I still am concerned with where are you going to put the snow, and how wide are the roads? So there, there's quite a couple of questions I'll be dealing with as we get more into this, so that's kind of a biggie for me. I do not like narrow roads, I saw McCall do narrow roads from the library to the highway, and it was...
So I can respond to that. They have 50-foot rights of ways, which is allowed in the PUDs, Tamrac has 50-foot rights of ways, Sudamount has 50-foot rights of ways, and they have 50-foot rights of ways, and then they have a 70-foot, what they're calling the boulevard, that's for their major roads going through. Individual neighborhoods have 50 feet.
Are they going to have curbs?
Road curb, I believe.
Road curbs.
The other thing was, is that we specifically asked our road superintendent and our engineer, are 50-foot appropriate? And I received yes, so I was not going to be expert.
Isn't that our private road standards is 50 foot?
Well, no, private road standards are 70 feet, but with a planned unit development, all of our PUDs do the 50 feet. We've also allowed the 50 feet on some subdivisions where they would have huge, huge cuts and fills, going up some steep topography, they have the 50-foot right of way.
Yeah, I just want two vehicles to be able to park, and then two jet boats to pass without taking mirrors off, you know what I'm saying?
They have that on the boulevard. In the individual neighborhoods, I'm asking for no on-street parking.
You're going to have on-street parking, I mean, you go down through Woodlands or any of these other subdivisions, they have on-street parking. I got a Meridian this weekend, I'm looking at theirs, people are on the street, and it's tight. It's tight.
You have an HOA that enforces that, however, but I think, I think the agreement was that we have parking on one side in that development agreement. That's something that we can put into the development agreement for further conversation. Let's see.
That, that concerns me. We've got snow skies, we've got all that stuff, and it's just making it a little bit too narrow is not smart.
Um, I guess, you know, if you want to talk it in general perspective, Cinda, I have quite a few issues with it. First of all is the open space, and the developers' applications are going to use basically easements through people's backyards. Oh, you are done?
I'm done.
I'm sorry.
I just had those two questions.
And our code 9-9-2 says open space or should be under common ownership.
They have removed that, if you look at the development agreement and then the revised conditions of approval that were sent, it says open space easements will be removed from the rear yards, recommend open space, open rail fencing be required along pathways and maintenance of the open rail fencing will be done by the HOA, privacy fencing in the backyard will be allowed, subject to placement allowance in the CCNRs. So they have removed that, and they also removed the snow storage easements on the front.
So where are they picking up the open space to take that?
That was minimal, the open space for that, because they already have the 40-foot rights of way, I mean, common ownership.
Roads as open space and the sidewalk?
No, they cannot do that. They have trails and pathways, and then the pond areas and the community areas.
And that was the other issue, is the ponds, can the public use those ponds, or this is just for the people that live in that development can use that pond? Because you're, if you're counting the open space, that means people from that development can use that for recreation.
Yes, they can use that for recreation, aesthetics, open space. The ordinance does say that you can use ponds for open space.
Do we know the acreage of the ponds?
Off the top of my head, I do not know.
I never could find that to see how, not only that, but how much cubic feet of water they're going to hold for the runoff in the spring. I never could find that to see how, not only that, but how much cubic feet of water they're gonna hold for the runoff in the spring.
Um, Sinda, do you have the ability to put that picture of the subdivision up?
Well, I was trying to get there before we started. What day did we hear it, do you remember?
Hmm, first part of June, wasn't it?
There we go. Hmm, try that one. Bonnie, do you know which one it is? Here we go.
But for the overall plan, Bonnie, do you guys have a, a flat map that shows acreages and, see, that doesn't give me any acreages or anything.
They don't do this, the hard lines.
It'll be that till afterwards, okay?
You get into your next phases. This is a planning and development where you have your concept approvals. And then we have a CUP for the specific phase one. These are your pond areas here.
Um, I think that's kind of important to note as far as if we're gonna take the easement out between houses, where are they gonna pick up the rest of the open space?
They aren't taking the easements out between houses. They are maintaining like these pathways behind every house. All they took off was an easement where they couldn't construct sheds and things in their backyards for a certain distance.
So those pathways are gonna be under one common ownership?
Yes.
That's changed.
And they are, they are open to the public. No, that has not changed.
Like a forty foot.
As they removed that so that people own their entire backyard and they didn't have anything to cross it. And I didn't like the snow storage easement across the front of the lots. Because it restricted the ability to put in landscaping. They removed both of those.
It was a forty-foot area between backyard to backyard.
That pathway.
That's what the, all these pathways are. That's all the open space. You've got your exterior, your interior. You have this common open space here. And this open space here.
The other issue, Sinda, that, since we're talking about open space, and I've already talked this in the past, nine dash nine dash two talks about natural open space. So if this is a, um, a mowed, like a lawn, is that considered natural? Nine dash nine dash two.
Um, are you, they're not using backyards.
No, no, I guess my question to you is, does the open space have to remain in natural state?
No, no.
You can use lawns and like that for open space.
They are, you can use mowed, common areas. You can use improved common areas. Community centers are open space. It's community areas.
I mean, jugging.
See that, there's a, there's a conflict there because in nine dash nine dash two, it says, also preserve natural features and land state landscape characters. And looking at their site map, there's a large stand of trees on the southeast corner. And I think there's a large stand of quakies on the northwest corner. And I'm assuming those are all gonna be taken out for this development. How does that solve the issue with nine dash nine dash two? Preserve natural features and landscape characters?
That, that's just in, in purpose section of the planned unit development. If you go to nine dash five, look at definitions, it provides the definition for open space.
Same purpose. It is expected that a PUD will provide certain amenities like recreation facilities, landscaping, and natural open spaces for the enjoyment of all owners, employees, and will demonstrate better than average quality of development. So what I'm hearing you say, Ald, is you would like, you know, to preserve some of those trees. So could you include additional landscaping requirements?
Well, under nine, it was nine nine three B. The proposal works with the characteristics of the site by protecting or highlighting attractive features and by minimizing the impact of development where natural constraints exist. Looking at this application, all those stands of trees and quakies are gonna be completely removed. That, to me, is a violation of that ordinance.
And the community was requesting that, that western boundary, that the trees remain as privacy boundaries?
Where the ponds are.
Where the ponds are. So include that.
I don't know if we have the latest and greatest map, but I think there's, if you look there, see the, the trees down in the southeast corner? All that's gonna go away. And then up out there at the top in the northwest, along Loomis, there's a large stand of quakies. This is an old picture. This is a very old picture. To me, that was another concern I have.
I would ask that we have heavier landscaping added to the Loomis and the Old State Highway than standard because it is a PUD.
Oh, the ordinances say don't disturb those areas that are already landscaped? I don't know. That's what I'm asking.
I personally, I don't know that I feel that that stand of trees on the south side is important. I think that, I think that protection for the existing landowners on that western boundary is important. I would ask that they preserve those trees. But, I mean, I don't know what that stand is. It's not old growth. It's nothing that's, they removed all the other trees on that entire parcel. I don't, I don't know what that stand is. But to me, they're gonna replicate landscaping. I think that we need to protect the owners on the western border. And I think we need additional landscaping on Loomis and Old State.
Is this project, Sinda, um, I don't know if you know the answer to this. Is this picture we're looking at of the whole project, has that become seen at all, a hundred and sixty acres?
Yes.
Edge to edge?
Edge to edge. That's the PUD. That's not the preliminary plot for the first phase, though.
No, the first phase kind of comes out through the middle of it.
I was looking at that stand of trees. And that's down on that right-hand side, and I think that's their last phase. So if we required additional landscaping along Old State and Loomis, that would have a chance to fill in.
Well, and I can't remember where in the ordinance I read, but for wildlife corridors, to me, that is the perfect site to leave for wildlife corridors. As that's built right now, if I'm a deer or an elk, there's no way I'm gonna go into that development. There's no way out except for back out to the county roads or walking right through the middle of commercial. So the wildlife corridors are basically gone. But I don't remember which part of the ordinance that says that.
Because my backyard's a wildlife quarter. So you think it depends on, I mean, I'm right in the middle of McCall.
It depends on your wildlife.
Uh, yeah, I agree with you a hundred percent. But I, you know, I think the ponds, and again, you know, leaving as much landscaping as we can or building up landscaping between the existing landowners and those ponds are a great wildlife quarter. The wildlife are gonna go to water and.
At least the ducks and a lot of the birds will.
I think even, the deer came up and ate all my geraniums this weekend and drank the water on the bottom of the pond or.
I, I wish there was some kind of a natural quarter throughout, either in the middle or at the south end of the development that they leave for.
The pathways, they're, they're not gonna be your typical manicured pathway. They're, they're going to be the, the pathways, the trees that they, they showed us.
They're gonna be landscape pathways, you understand that?
Trees. So which ones would you want to see? I think this is where.
Um, if you go back to that first map of the bear lot, there's quite a bit.
But if you were to ask them, if you were to mitigate the removal of those trees, and ask them to put trees out there and create wildlife quarters. Because I, I agree with the wildlife quarter. I'm asking that in their CCNRs, all animals have to remain on a leash while outside. So that dogs aren't chasing them. Because I've had them killed in front of me before, and that's terrible. So, but if you looked at the plat, sorry, I'm using the plat for a minute. You know, which, what areas would be wildlife quarters that would, you would want to remain natural?
Well, it's just.
This is not really great, but down here is the rest of the quarters on the end of it.
Small animals and ducks and geese, that kind of stuff. I think the ponds are, are gonna be an attraction, and I think that's a plus. But for large wildlife, there's no way they're not gonna go and stand in the middle of this development very long. They're gonna head for the timber because that's where they're protected. And I think that should be considered in this application, and some of that as natural. Just my feeling.
Can I ask if where the pathway picture is? Is Bonnie here? Is that fine?
Yeah, 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 I'm sorry.
Where's the pathway picture in all the documentation? I don't think I have it here. I think that's what you put in the development agreement. But, you know, you help design those pathways. And so that there is some opportunity to have a conversation with the developer on what you want in those pathways.
I think that's kind of what we're doing now.
Well, the development agreement's not good for us right now.
Let me see. Anything else?
We're definitely not gonna get all the way through this today, Jim.
I didn't think we would. We needed more time, but it is what it is.
What are these things?
They look like little planters in the middle of the road.
Mr. Oki, are eleven o'clock, can that be postponed till this afternoon?
So Sinda, this map here shows some paths on it. I don't know if this is the one you're looking for.
Does that show the?
Shows the gray lines around the ponds.
Oh, yeah, that's all the pathway system. But they had the, the four pictures. And he showed pathways he's done in the valley, but he was showing a picture of the pathways here where there's going to be trees running down. And more of a, a pa, uh, unimproved type of pathway versus an asphalted pathway with manicured lawn on each side.
I don't know where it's at.
The landscaping plan shows.
Oh, here's, this shows all the pathways.
Location. She's just trying to find the ownership of what's actually in all those traffic.
I can't get to my email.
She's a cloud driver, she's gonna.
Okay, here we go.
That's some of her carpet?
Yes, all this has been, has been given to you. It's right here. Here's the pathways, you know, that he's done before. But this is what they are proposing in this, on these pathways. Is the treat areas in, in more of a natural state versus the manicured.
So is that throughout the development or just on the, the south side where they have the timber?
That's throughout. That's all these pathways here. All, behind every house is a pathway.
There's a forty-foot area back there.
Yes.
So we could request that part of those remain or become a natural state. I mean, everything's been cleared at this point. I don't know where the wildlife quarters currently is. But we could create those, uh, some of these being filled with aspen and filled with, you know, deciduous, or trees that would be attractive to the population. And that's.
Yeah, I think that was the plan with this picture, is to make it, you know, the trees in a more natural state.
I think that's part of the development agreement is that we request to see the landscaping plan and mitigate. Because wildlife quarters are important to us up here.
Especially where it's already timbered ground, this looks like.
Yeah, and use that timber as the, as their hand. I mean.
This looks like.
I think that would be one good way to handle that.
Um, in the application, figure three of five shows the landscaping plan. And there's quite a bit on the, um, along Loomis and Old State. And then these pathways. But we can ask for more details? Is that, is that what you want to see then?
Yes.
You want to see a description of types?
Proposed pathways. With a heavy emphasis, emphasis on wildlife quarters.
Okay, so then, is there any more when you talk about that? Um, I would like to go down and talk a little bit about, um, the traffic volume. And I want, I want to make sure I understand this right. They are gonna be required by, one of their phases to build a north and south turn lane on Highway Fifty-Five. Is that correct? Like phase four, I think it is?
What are the traffic through four?
Is ITD, how does ITD guarantee you guys will do that?
Can we get?
We get bonds?
If you want Craig to respond, um, can he?
Sure, but you gotta come to the mic, Craig, if you don't mind.
Maybe even have Dan's response on that, I'm sure.
In the development agreement, uh, the proposed language that we have there is, is that we were obligated to build the acceleration, de-acceleration lane at Highway Fifty-Five and Loomis, um, based on what the original traffic study indicates. And that it's a condition of that phase's final plat.
So I guess my question then is, are you gonna use the master homeowners association funding mechanism to fund those improvements to Highway Fifty-Five?
Absolutely not.
So then do you have to bond with ITD then to do that, or?
I either have, well, you guys have control of it because it's a condition of your final plat recording. And so, you know, if, if I don't have the improvements done when I'm ready to record the final plat, then I'd have to provide you a bid for those improvements and you would require bonding for me. But my intention would be to do all those improvements before we record the final plat.
I understand that, Craig, and I'm not, I'm not trying to sound derogatory here, but if something happens to you or the development and it goes defunct, which we have seen before, that stuff doesn't get built. So how do we make sure that gets built if your development fails?
It's in the development agreement, and we won't record the final plat until it is. That's that sequencing.
And what phase does that kick in?
I think that TIS had indicated twenty-eight.
Twenty-twenty-eight and twenty-twenty-three, two separate turn lanes will be built. So the plat will be recorded at that time. And you have to get sign off that all that's in, sign that. It'll all be verified.
So what phase was that again?
We, the year.
Can you use the mic?
I'll ask that question, then, if I could, just raise maybe a point of order suggestion for, um, to help make it productive and helpful to give you information. To your question, the T, traffic impact study specifies a year by which certain turn lanes will need to be built. So whatever phase would be in process at that time, call it phase four, that would be those right turn lanes, that left turn lane. It'd have to be verified by you before we record the applicable final plat at that time. So it's really, you gotta look at it from a year standpoint, not so much a phase. Because that's the benchmark that the traffic impact study has indicated. And wherever we are at in the phase process, be it phase three or phase four, that's gonna be the applicable phase. But it's more the year, uh, Chairman. And twenty-twenty-eight is the first year for, um, improvement at Loomis and State Highway. Twenty-thirty-three is another turn lane at that intersection.
And I would recommend that we put this traffic mitigation into the development agreement so we have more of an opportunity.
It's in there.
I understand that. I'm not approving the development agreement today. So I'm not approving what we just received. I want a chance to look at it. I want a chance for our engineer to look at it, to make sure that it meets county conditions.
Absolutely.
This is what's being proposed. We don't have to accept the proposal. This is in the development agreement and can be. Are they discussed?
Chairman, if I may raise just a point of order to help with that discussion, we have the redlined version of the DA that attempts to implement all the conditions that staff provided last week, as well as points raised at the prior hearing. And it may help just to flesh out some of the points that help you work through the DA and see what satisfies some of the questions and concerns you had. And if there's more, we can take note of that, and then when we return, it sounds like we'll have a continuance perhaps, we can flesh that out in the meantime. So what I propose is putting up here the DA, and it just kind of methodically walks through all the points that we, I think you would hope to cover today.
So today, we're not doing the DA?
No, we're not today. And I, I'm going backwards here, but can you state your name for the record?
Preston Rutter, 251 East, Front Street. And correct, you know, when you approve that is up to you. If that would help aid in the discussion for this project, this is all I'm proposing, not a final decision, but just walking through.
Preston, what I'm feeling like today is whether or not we're going to accept this as a PUD or just reject the vote. I don't think we're even at the DA development.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of other things that need to go in there, too. That would be new information. I think our decision today, or probably not today, maybe, is to decide if this is actual stand-up PUD or if it's not.
Understood. Some points have been brought up, that touch on both, so we'll stand ready to answer as needed.
Okay, then I'm going to move on. Thank you for that. During the hearing in June, we had from the applicant that we had an issue with high water table. And it's been an issue in that area. We heard from a lot of neighboring properties that they have flooded basements, they have a lot of pump stations. The applicant stated that that end of the development, the water table is about 36 inches from the top of the ground. Our proposal was to do two drainage ponds, which we've seen on this map. Then you guys went on and discussed about it. That isn't enough, we're going to dump it to the south, down the railroad drainage, and let it go on towards the lake. My concern is that, do you have agreements with those folks that live south of that to take that water? If they sell to somebody else and they fill that lot, build on it, you have nowhere to go with excess water. How are we going to solve that issue? That was another concern I had, Cindy.
Okay.
Because there is a lot of water in this area.
Right. The, let me take that one point at a time. In Railroad Village, which is adjacent to this.
To the south?
To the west.
Okay. Yeah.
There is a requirement that they not fill, there's a 20-foot permanent drainage easement going along the east side of all of those lots.
And I had, and I kind of had some notes in here that that's not really the applicant's job to make sure those are maintained. That's the county's job, correct?
Yes. That's the homeowner's job. And they've agreed per their, that's purchase of their land, that they won't do these things.
Uh huh. So we, we need to go back and look at that as a separate issue from this, but what I'm saying is the same thing could happen to the south where the drainage gets filled in, driveways get built, and no coverts, and pretty soon we got a lake down there on people that aren't even a part of this application.
The development is this close to the reservoir, right here. He is, he has testified that he is currently working with this owner, or in discussions with him, this Mr. Barton. And Mr. Barton has been working to continue cleaning that ditch down to the reservoir. That's all railroad right away?
That's all railroad.
Yeah, that's all railroad right away. The ditch ran clear down along that east side, and this one kind of grew in, and Barton's cleaning that out. Then you get up into Railroad Village. And that will be part of the stormwater management plan is, and it could be part of the development agreement that we work county with the developer and Barton to get that ditch clean.
So the guy that owns the corner lot there, that first lot, he can, he has the right to go in and fill that lot where that drainage goes away, correct? Right now?
No. Had a 20-foot drainage easement there.
Is that, that drainage easement, is that privately owned, or is it?
That, that was something we put on the plat. We required in the plat. You know, something similar is over in Fir Grove, people, one gentleman, we just got through working with him last week, was he filled in up to his lot line, he had to go remove six feet of dirt because that was left open for drainage. There's 20 feet on the east side of Railroad Village that was supposed to be.
So we have the authority to go in as a county and say, this is a platted drainage easement, and if you don't maintain it, we will.
We will maintain it and charge the landowner.
Yeah.
You have the right to go back. There's that landowner. Before they do any work, you know, for the stormwater management, the engineers, I am not an engineer, will determine how much stormwater is.
That'll come from the plant.
That will be, come from the engineers. But another requirement for that high groundwater on here was a condition of approval, and its footing drains will be part of structure design if there are crawl spaces. And then drainage plans for each individual lot will be submitted and reviewed by the applicable architectural control committee. So they will be doing things on site, and I believe I heard them say that in their backyards, they will use certain types of drainage systems.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, Craig, but you guys are also going to do slab-on-grade? There's not going to be any, any, what do I want to say, not basement? Crawl spaces under these houses?
There'll be a combination of crawl spaces and slab-on-grade.
Well, it just depends on what the water table says. Thanks. Craig, I was reading, you're, you're going to use a lot of that fill you're taking out for the ponds to raise levels of some of the homes, is that correct?
Yeah, it's more of an engineering question, Neil, but yeah, I believe that we were going to, whatever excavation we have on site, we're going to leave it on site.
Going to leave it on site. Okay. That's what I was questioning. Well, and I would assume, too, that the roads they built, they're going to be dug out and filled in, and they'll use that material, too, for, to raise the lots themselves.
Yep.
Chairman, I would move that our 11 o'clock action item be moved to the afternoon.
Thanks.
At 2 o'clock.
Um, yeah. We, we don't really need a motion, we can just do that, but if you want to make a motion, we will. Okay, so do I have a second, Neil? Just move a second. Whatever. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, Kristen just stated in the minutes that we move 11 o'clock executive session till after lunch. And what's going down? The next one was, um, uh, number seven, that was my concern, was where's this drainage water going to go to the south? It sounds like we've answered that.
Although, there will be some going, there, there's an existing drainage here. Some will continue to go west, but most of this will, will go to the south.
There's much roofing, there's much pavement, that we're going to have a lot more water coming off this piece of ground. This is going to happen. And again, I've kind of referred back to compatibility rating, but item number eight is to propose use compatible with the abilities of public agencies to provide service or of public facilities to accommodate the proposed use demands on utilities, fire, police, protection, school, roads, traffic, parks, and open areas. And this will definitely, because of 340-some homes, increase the demand of our EMS, sheriff appraisal, trash, billing permits, all these departments will see an increase in service demand. Um, at a base rate of 600,000 per lot, times our levy rate this year, this will generate about, at full buildout, will generate around 200 million in value. Times our levy rate is going to raise about 170,000 in tax revenue for the county. And I can say for sure that 170,000 is not going to hire maybe one sheriff with a pickup and a, or one deputy with all the equipment he needs with. So I think that one is also, um, something else that we need to talk about in the development agreement. You're going to have to have more staff to take on the permits, billing permits, all that stuff. Um, because this is, I think it's going to be a, a bigger demand on public service than we think it is. And then nine, I kind of answered number nine, the, or the tax revenue we receive off this at full buildout is not going to be near enough to cover the increased demand on county and EMS, fire all of our public services. And that doesn't even count the commercial. I didn't even count the commercial value because I don't know what they are. That doesn't count. That's what I'm assuming, too, that no one has a homeowner's exemption, so they're a full tax. There could be some homeowners that can bring that value down even more, which would be less revenue.
My turn?
Yep.
For the cotton plan, I already went over goal one, accommodating growth, and I listed the four areas that I feel speak to goal one. Chapter three, private property rights. Goal one, protect individual property rights while considering, uh, community rights. Design, or number one, design all provisions to the cotton plan in order to protect both private property rights and the community's right to have a safe and healthy community. I don't know who put sewer and water to this site, but in my opinion, they took it out at ag ground when they did that. So what this is doing is instead of, just like Neil talked about, putting more wells and septics in, the sewer and water district will actually protect the community's rights to a safe and healthy community. I think that is a better use when we can connect sewer and water in areas that do drain close to the lake. Number four, implement the plan in order to ensure that land use policies, restrictions, conditions, and fees do not violate private property rights adversely impact property values or create unnecessary technical limitations on the use of the property. That's per Idaho Code Section 67-6508A. And I will give you, I will give you this listing to amend to the minute. And fortunately, and this is just a statement, negative or not against our farming community, but when the owner sold the property to a developer, developer, he set the future land use. The cost of the purchase will not accommodate ag use. And so as these ag lands are turning over, I think, you know, I, I have spoken over and over again and worked with the Payette Land Trust to try and talk to farming, the farming community, to try and put things into long-term conservation easements so that they are paid a fee for these grounds and we can conserve some of this land. Right now, this did not happen. Owner of this property chose, instead of selling it to ag-related purposes, chose to put it into a developer's hands, so he set that future land use because the cost of it is different between a developer and an ag person buying this ground. This is right out of code. Does the regulation or action have a significant impact on the landowner's economic interest and the property as a whole? If yes, then we, the impact must not be a severe reduction in value. And so the takings law in Idaho says that if we go out to someone that owns a piece of ground and we say, you can't do this on it, and you have to do this, then that is a taking, so we have to buy that ground from them. So we, as a county, would become landowners in numerous situations if we didn't take the takings law into consideration. Number four, chapter four, natural resources. Goal one, conserve and manage groundwater and surface water in all of its forms in order to prevent depletion or pollution. Again, sewer and water is through a district, doesn't take that into account. Number one, orient the watershed management practices toward the improvement and maintenance of ground and surface water quality throughout the county. I have, this is going to be for the engineer that is working on the water management, but I think the settling ponds will create, capture, and settle out some of the sediment before releasing it into drainage to the lake. I'd like to see those best management practices put into our development agreement, that they have to follow that, that, that will be a part of what the engineer's, um, look is on that. Encourage open space buffers adjacent to rivers and creeks in order to preserve riparian areas. Wetlands will be mitigated and settling ponds will improve water to the lake. I think you need to take a strong look at the wetlands and make sure that we are creating additional wetlands if possible and mitigating any loss of those. Goal two, preserve and protect the rich natural resources assets, property values, animals, and people in Valley County from the threat of a wildfire. This PUD is not in the woolie. The Forest Service is asking us for less development near Forest Service ground to prevent wildfire. Goal two, or goal three. Protect fish and wildlife as natural resources of critical importance in Valley County. Again, sewer and water do that, and I think mitigating wildlife quarters in that development agreement will be important in landscaping. Objectives, one, goal, Valley County shall encourage preservation, protection, and enhancement of wildlife and fish, preservation of open space buffers adjacent to rivers and creeks for wildlife and fish habitat, preservation of historical wildlife movement quarters. I think we mitigate the potential harm by enforcing animal control within the subdivision within the CCNRs. I think it's really critical. I had a dog kill a deer in front of me one time, and it is heartbreaking to watch that happen. I think animals need to be controlled. Ponds can be an enhancement to wildlife preservation with vegetation and landscaping. Fish and game did not speak to this application. I would really like to hear from Fish and Game on best practices when it comes to these types of preservation. Unfortunately, they didn't give us any response. Chapter five, various levels of radon gas are found in the county. I think within your CCNRs, you do need to speak to the radon gas that is in Valley County and add a statement on where they can contact individuals in order to have radon testing completed. Transportation, to improve county-wide transportation. And again, these are just my thoughts, but I think we do need to put this in the development agreement, that we are not approving that yet. We want to talk about transportation as a whole and letting our engineer have a chance to speak with us about this. But Loomis Road was just requested to become a major collector for future road grants as part of our county-wide transportation plan. Um, that's one way that we will look at that. Mitigate impacts by requesting 35 deep, 35 feet deep easements on Loomis, and then require the developer to participate in the intersection improvements on Loomis and 55. The other thing with this, and I am listening to the community that's there, that there is only one ingress and egress out of that area, Loomis. So I will make a pledge and work with our road department to try and secure an additional area within that general area, maybe north of that where Sisker Road comes in, to try and, and create a new easement onto Old State. I am listening to that conversation and have concerns myself that it's pretty heavily wooded back in there. We've had problems with wildfire mitigation efforts in that area. So I'd ask that the homeowners participate in our wildfire mitigation program, but also that we, as a county, look to an additional access point into that area, and whether it be north or south, we will look into trying to find a different access point there. Housing, goal five is to provide a variety of quality housing types for current and future working and retired residents. The objective, amend, amend the land use ordinance to increase densities in areas supported by sewer and water where it is compatible with surrounding, surrounding land uses. Again, I didn't put sewer and water in this area, I don't know who did, but whoever did it changed the general area, in my opinion. Economic development. There's a whole chapter on economic development. The size and number of farms maintained for agricultural purposes is decreased and crop lands are being purchased and developed to satisfy the demands for recreation housing. Agriculture has declined steadily as an employer from 168 jobs in 1980 to 53 jobs in 2016. That is, it's a fact, it's not, I came from a farm, I, I think it's a tragedy, too, but we have to be able to put development, density of development on sewer and water so that we can protect our ag lands in other areas and allow farmers to remain and be a part of our economy. Back in the 80s, when mills all closed, recreation became our economic driver for this region. In order to do that, you have to continue to build housing. I'm sorry, but that's a part of our economy, whether I like it or not, that's a part of our money. Recreation has become more influential to, influential to the local economy. Retail and services are now the top employment category with government second, construction Chapter 10, to promote and support a viable recreation and tourism program that is in harmony with the land use section, create improvements and add more varied opportunities for indoor and outdoor recreation for the enhancement of leisure time by all. for indoor and outdoor recreation for the enhancement of leisure time by all people of all ages. Encourage new developments to provide and maintain onsite, develop recreational facilities, parks, green belts, pathways, or open space. Promote the development of new recreation facilities when they are compatible with land use goals. Number two, to promote clustering of structures and new developments so as to preserve open space while allowing density. Goal two, to ensure that new development pays for its own impacts on facilities, utilities, and services. One of the largest things that we hear, people are very concerned, that development impact the existing owners. And so in Valley County, new development pays for its own way. And that's critical, that we make that statement on record. We are not putting costs onto the existing taxpayers that are here, and those that are using the current facilities. Development needs to increase the impacts on facilities. And then they are mitigating the concerns that we currently have with North Lake Sewer and Water District in this area. They need a well, that well that's out there needs to be improved. Now I go to our ordinance review, the PUD review. Nine dash nine dash three does talk about PUDs. I believe that they meet the requirements of a PUD. Community comments. Again, we are listening to the community, but the community doesn't always do the analysis work that we have to do to make sure that we're meeting law. So I'm listening to concerns, and we always try and mitigate concerns as we can, if it's within our ability to do so. They want the trees maintained along the western boundary. I think that can be a part of our wildlife mitigation plan, too. The trail along the western boundary, can we relocate? There was a question about, you guys have on your, on your, that the trail along the western boundary, can we relocate it so it's not right next to the existing owners, and then make sure that there's access all the way down to Old State? So maybe something, no, that?
You're talking on the eastern boundary.
They talked, they said, "Trail along the western boundary, please relocate it and extend it to Old State."
There is one, no.
There's nothing in back of the subdivision between that southern boundary and the people next to them? Maybe put a trail system in there somewhere in order to?
Here?
Yes. And is there a trail system on both Loomis and, and Old State?
I believe so.
There is, okay. I could only see just a landscape, and I don't know that it should be a berm. I mean, you didn't, what I'm calling for is higher landscaping, so you don't have to berm it, because that becomes an issue. Wildlife jumps out over a berm into traffic, and that is a concern. So maybe bermed areas, but.
There's one.
Okay. So that one and this one, and then I guess they're asking for one here. I don't know why you just have one in the southern.
It makes sense.
Yeah. It's north and east, it's probably fine.
There is one on the west, also.
Again, they talked about the infrastructure upgrades to be the cost of the developer, turn lanes. So what the community is asking for is at Loomis and Old State, there be some kind of a turn lane there, four-way stop, maybe, I don't know. That intersection also needs to be looked at, and maybe that's Jeff and Dan, I'm not, I'm not as familiar with that area as I should be, so. Paving improvements to entrances upon phasing, so making sure that Loomis and Old State are up to speed. I think, Jeff, when we improved Old State, we stopped at Loomis, and so the southern part of Old State would need to be improved prior to any development on that section. No concert venue. I did notice in the new development agreement, you're requesting that just a small ensemble be approved up until nine AM. I don't know who oversees that, so the, you know, make sure in your CCNRs that that is addressed, that the HOA is very clear, that that is not the desire that your surrounding Landscaping, again, to restrict the view into the subdivision from Loomis and Old State. You are impacting the people that are there, they're used to seeing an open field, they need to see something that's beautified along that area. Prove storm mitigation, no on-street parking. And then, and I think we need to put something as a condition that specifically states to the fact that dogs are dangerous to wildlife, and should remain on a leash if not within the boundaries of the property owner. I believe that's a requirement in the CCNRs.
Well, if you fence the backyards, that'll take care of a lot of that issue, because the dogs would be in the backyard.
Yeah. If they actually do fence their, their backyards. A couple of other things, I noticed that there was a comment, so the ice rink, personally, that would not be my preference, this is yours. I would love to see some ball fields in there for kids. But there was also a comment that in the summertime, you could use it for a farmer's market. Don't only have a farmer's market, don't compete against your locals. That would not be a good use of that area, so maybe some other thought about summertime use and what could be done there. I'm just a little confused with your phasing, to be honest with you, because you're phasing number one in the middle of the subdivision, so you're not gonna be building some of the amenities that I think should be built along Loomis. I don't know when the, all the landscaping goes in, but I'd like to see that landscaping along Loomis before, you know, phase one goes in. I know there's gonna be some cost there, and I think it's important to protect the communities that are already in place prior to. It's really important that you use the best management practices, is designed by the engineers on those ponds, making sure that some settlement can occur and improve the water quality before it hits the lake. I think that's really important.
Well, and then there's also an issue with these settling ponds that after so many years, you gotta clean them out, because they will fill up with all kinds of stuff, and then you've lost your capacity. I know some of the other problems we've talked about, how many cubic feet of water are you able to store, does that match what is engineered to run off this site? I think that's a huge step.
So would you want something in the CCNRs that feature?
It should maintenance be, by the homeowners, or?
Yeah.
Executive homeowner committee, whatever they're calling that, but these things do fill up.
And I think that would be critical, that we just call it out, you know, the HOA has to make that a part of long-term maintenance. I think it would be important to the residents that are out there to know which units are gonna be short-term rentals. I would really hope, and in the development agreement, I think that needs to be ascertained on which of these units are gonna be short-term rentals, and then hold it to that, put some kind of a restriction on it, that the rest of them cannot become short-term rentals afterwards. And then within the CCNRs also puts the name of contact, name and number of contacts. The problem that we have always on these short-term rentals is people don't know who to call. They call the sheriff's department, sheriff's department goes, you know, that's, we do have some more code enforcement now with these, but they need the name and phone number of whoever it is to call. I have concern with on-street parking. You gotta be able to put in that development agreement how you're gonna control on-street parking, because at fifty feet, you're not gonna be able to push a bunch of people through there. In the wintertime, they need no on-street parking, so that those roads can be filed. We have no on-street parking on county roads for the exact same reason. City McCall has no on-street parking for the exact same reason, need to figure out your parking requirements. Pressurized irrigation system has been called out, that it'd be just for the common space, and I think if the water right allows, that that needs to be added for the subdivision. I think it's a huge benefit. City water is very expensive, North Lake Sewer and Water's gonna be very expensive to water this, so allowing pressurized irrigation is a benefit. I asked Craig to look in to see if his water right is a junior or senior, because water right law is changing in the state. Domestic wells, the potential is there for domestic wells to become a water right issue, and so that's the other reason pushing things towards sewer and water is going to be very important. Right now, there's a lot of legal wrangling in the state over water rights, and they are discussing domestic well rights. So if you have a junior water right, you could be told you can't water your yard. You can only get enough out of it in order to use for personal use, so that would be an important thing. Okay, I think that was my comments. And the reason I wanted to go over those is because on this compatibility, we are to be doing this compatibility rating per code based on mitigation practices. So when we're going over these, and we're asking them to mitigate these things, when we do this compatibility rating now, it becomes as a mitigated site, and this occurred, mitigation hasn't been created. And so I think it was important, to me anyway, to bring out what I looked at and the mitigation requirements that I'm requesting for this, this PUD to be approved. And I do think, because water and sewer is on it, the density on it, I'm not as concerned with density. I think that the lot sizes are appropriate. If we're ever to get to the point where someone can afford a property in Valley County, we can't build one-in-five-acre lots all over the place. They're too expensive, can't, we can't continue to do that. I've said many times, we have about six percent of our land use that we actually control, because most of our county is forested and water bodies, and if we continue to do just one-in-five acre parcels, then first of all, it's not good for the aquifer, it's not good for the environment, put straws down through the surface all the time, but we're gonna run out of ground sooner rather than later. And smaller lots, there should be a reduction in price for those. I understand that people don't think these are affordable, but there's also the thought of, and I've lived in Valley County now for quite some time, I have good equity in my home, because I bought it at the right time, I can use that equity to put toward another project, or another property as I move forward. That frees up my home, that might be at a reduced cost for somebody, I don't know. There has to be, I've done about, I don't know, ten years' worth of work up here on housing right now, and a lot of the problems that we have is our first-time home buyers can't buy, and that is a true statement. That's why we have some apartments, to allow them an opportunity to live somewhere, acquire some, some funding for down payments. I'll continue to work on this as an issue, but we can't continue to only build large lots, we have to have some density. And that's, hopefully, will bring down the price. I like the townhomes in this one, I think it's an appropriate use. I think those will be the ones that our residents can actually afford at the end of the day. I'm glad to see some townhomes in here.
Those are the ones on the smaller lots near this there, right?
Yep. And those small lots, again, are why it's gonna be more cost-effective for locals, and I think you need to be very sensitive to where the short-term rentals are. Don't put them on the exterior, put them on the interior if at all possible. So the existing residents are not the ones that are suffering. People move in knowing that there are short-term rentals there, not putting them upon the existing owners. I think a lot's gonna be in the development agreement, and I'm not willing to finalize the development agreement at this.
Craig, real quick, can you give us the phases, which, which first, first, who's on second, who's on third?
I think your map you have.
It doesn't show it, what a map might.
And I moved in here. I think it's color coded.
Didn't figure it out. You have that, isn't that in the application?
Yep.
Yeah, I have that one there. Can you find it?
So I will, I will say this, Commissioner Thompson and Commissioner Mopin, in regards to the landscaping that you, Commissioner Mopin, that you were looking for on Loomis there, our original landscape plan doesn't show improvements to Loomis, you know, in the first phase, but we'd be willing to, you know, approve a certain section of that, so it looks, uh...
I think that would be important to the existing landlords. So phase one, is this where the community center is, there in the middle? It's, yeah. This is phase two.
I used to catch phase one. Yeah, but see, this is all kind of changed now, because you're gonna have two big ponds over here.
Right.
So we don't really have a, a real, that's true. Well, here's, here's, let me see what you just showed.
Yeah, so this is phase one. Maybe even phase two might be the orange.
So there's the ponds, I don't know.
Well, they added a third pond. Yeah, this is a pond, this is the third pond, and then they moved some of this density to those townhomes.
So this is an acre anyhow. Okay.
That does give you a phase.
Right. Yep, yep. Okay, Cindy, where do we go from here?
Need to go back to the comp, or the compatibility. Number four, is the property large enough? Does the existence of wooded area, or does the lay of the land help to minimize any potential impacts the proposed use may have on adjacent uses? Flat ground.
Oh, flat ground.
I gave that one a two. Give it a what, two, positive two?
I did two. Well, it was the, does the existence of wooded area, or the lay of the land help minimize? But the wooded area's going away, so I don't, I didn't really know how to...
But they're proposing the landscaping.
My thing was, what is, it's not even in the impact areas.
Right, but, but they're proposing the landscaping?
To mitigate?
To mitigate those visual impacts there.
I'm gonna give, my vote's a zero.
I'll go with a one. A positive one.
Well, that's a three, right? Total, average?
Yeah. I'll look when I get done. The size or scale of proposed lots, and/or structure similar to adjacent ones. I gave it a one, because there is, Railroad Village is smaller, and I think a lot of the stuff over in Wagon Wheel is half acre, but I gave it a one, I didn't give it a full two.
I gave it a two. And I gave it a negative two, because there's some big lots to the south that are not this size, bigger lots.
What about the, the structures? The size of the houses?
Do we have any two-story in any of these other developments?
There's two-story houses all over the place.
In there, okay.
These are just going to be a typical house.
Okay, so I didn't even think about the structures.
Fourteen to sixteen hundred square feet. And that's, that's a lot of Wagon Wheels out, there's a lot of larger ones in Wagon Wheel.
I'm glad that they're not great big giant homes.
Yeah, me too. That's what's gonna help.
So I'll give that one a, a zero.
Get over on Lake is.
So he had a two, I had a one, he had a zero. So one. Is the traffic volume and character to be generated by the proposed use similar to the uses on properties that will be affected by proximity to parking lots, onsite roads, or access roads? I gave it a negative one. Traffic volumes there, they're gonna have to mitigate.
I did the same.
And I gave it a negative two.
Negative one.
So we're, negative one times two is what, a negative two?
No, it's negative one.
One times two is one?
Well, if you have a negative one, plus a negative one.
We have to change this form. Everybody's laughing, I'm laughing too.
Negative two, plus a negative two is a negative four divided by three.